Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. It is the Committee of the Whole, January 25th. I'd like to acknowledge that we are on the unceded lands of the Mi'kmaq. Record of attendance. Go ahead, councillor, deputy.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse councillor Bell.
Okay. Moved and seconded, any discussion? And she may be here for the MPS, she just, something came up, emergency. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. No absent with regrets. Any declarations of conflict of interest? You can certainly declare at the time of the agenda item. Okay, we're good. Approval of agenda, additions or deletions. And I did have councillor Hatfield ask us to remove 9A. Actually, we want to defer that. We want to put it on the next. Okay, so can I have a motion to defer that? Deputy councillor Lesser, any discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor? Contrary? Motion carried, thank you. Okay, anything else? Any more changes? We're good? Okay, a motion to approve the agenda with a deletion, please. Okay, councillor Cleveland, seconded by the deputy mayor. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried, thank you. No presentations. Okay, staff reports. Let's start with our CAO report. Okay, any questions for the CAO? Do you want to answer that question, please?
No. Your worship, I would like to introduce our latest addition to our staff. Muriel Thomas joined us in December. She is our Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Coordinator. And so that is a new initiative of the town. So she's tilling new soil and getting her feet on the ground. But asked her to join us for a few minutes this afternoon, just so council had an opportunity to meet her. Some of you already know her from past experiences. But anyway, I want to give you the opportunity to welcome Muriel.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for letting me come and I will record working with you for the future. Get back to work. Do you have any questions for me?
No, but we're glad you're here.
Why are you here?
Right outside my office.
Right outside my office.
Exactly. Thank you. Okay, anything else you got there? You good?
No, just, I will draw attention to the fact that she is within the Finance Department. And so there are some bullets within Gerry's report that are reflective of her work. And that's where her report will continue to appear on your agenda.
Thank you. I was going to ask that, too. Why it was under there. Well, it kind of threw me off when I read the. Okay. Fire department report, and the chief is here. Any questions for the chief? Or anything you want to share, chief, beyond your? Are you good?
I'm not sure.
But no. Okay, go ahead, deputy.
I'd just like to say I've seen the piece on Facebook about a new piece of equipment that you might have just purchased through the 50-50 and maybe a trailer. It might come in good use, I think, to the community.
Yeah, that's actually a really good news item. So the staff, of course, are involved in the 50-50 draw. And they've decided that they'd like to be more involved in purchasing some equipment. So the side-by-side, is it going to be outfitted with a skid that goes in the back of it? It'll carry water and a pump. And it'll also have a spot for a Stokes basket. So if there's a victim that need to be carried out, it'll be very handy for forest fires, grass fires, or, you know, we get called for all manner of things. Hunters falling out of trees. So it's going to be a very versatile piece of equipment. And they purchased a trailer to put it on as well. So it's a pretty significant investment. So, very happy, yeah.
Yeah, that was a great move.
Don't feel so bad for spending so much money on the 50-50.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, we'll all buy tickets now. You know what? Where's your? Okay, I just didn't know if I couldn't see it. Okay, good.
I just didn't notice you.
Yeah. Okay. He's testing us. It's not going to work, councillor. Okay, thanks, chief. Is there anything else for the chief I should ask? We good? Okay, thank you. Let's go backwards to 8A1, which I just thought was for information, but there's a change there. CAO, do you want to take us through that?
Yes, so the strategic priorities chart that's attached is generally for information. From the yellow box down is just sort of information from staff in terms of things that are high on their list. And those items are likely addressed within their individual reports. At the box above corporate priorities, the number one, the municipal planning strategy award contract, well, we did that. We awarded to Upland. And they're here in Yarmouth yesterday and today. And we'll be meeting with them later today. So I guess if you were going to update that from award contract, the next, I think, significant milestone is the beginning of the community engagement. And that will, let's put March on that as their intended date for that. And we'll continue to update that milestone as we work through the process.
So do you need a motion to change that? Or are you good just to?
No, we'll just update it. It's an administrative matter.
Awesome. Okay, any questions for the CAO on that one? Go ahead.
I just wondered if there was a, any movement on the IMA for the airport.
I have met with my colleagues on a couple of occasions about the IMA. And we've, we had a model for that that we had started to use during the pandemic. We have thrown that out because we think there are better models that we have. You know, every time we do an intermunicipal agreement, it seems that we do them better. We learn from our past experience. And so the one that you'll probably see, you'll probably recognize it as being similar to the new Mariner Centre intermunicipal agreement, where, again, the collective learnings are inserted there. So we have met a couple of times on that recently. We're not near the point of having something to present to you, but we're working on it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any more questions on the strategic chart? Go ahead.
It's not actually that, but I just wanted to let people know that my laptop's dead. So I'm using my phone in case anybody thinks. I know we typically don't use phones at the table, but I'm following along on my phone instead of laptop.
Thanks for letting us know. Thought you were texting for pizza or something. Okay. Operational services, and Chad isn't here today, but we can find him. Or if you have a question in particular that you wanted to ask, the CAO can give it a try. We good? Sorry. When I say give it a try, I mean he will articulate the correct answer. That's what I meant to say. We feel better, CAO?
We feel better.
Thank you. Okay, just making sure. Okay, planning and economic development, and Natalie's here. Any questions on that one? I had some, but I think I talked to Jeff on them. We good? All right. Engineering report, DiMario is here as well. Any questions for engineering? When do we start? It's probably right in the report, and I read it. When do we start Vancouver Street? Bringing this paper up.
You're sitting back and you have to walk.
For Vancouver, it's mostly weather dependent, but I'd like to think that it'll be April, early April.
Okay. April, how long does it go?
How long is, sorry?
How long is the project? Do we know? I mean, you can only guess it's supposed to be.
Ideally, if everything goes right, three months, ideally.
Oh, that's, okay.
Ideally. But obviously, things happen, weather dependent, things pop up, it's an underground, lots of unknowns.
Perfect. Okay. Good. Any questions for our engineer? Good, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, finance. Gerry's here, and he's going to do some budget stuff with us after. Any questions for Gerry? Something you wanted to tell us? Or did you just want to make the walk?
Just stretching my legs. No, I thought I'd also mention, it's not on the report, they phased in tax rebates for process this week. So there's 10 properties, and in total, it's around $39,000 being rebated back. So that's been done. Also, the, just a quick update on the operational budget that's not in there. I'll be getting stuff out to the management team here this week and early next week, hoping to get stuff back. So we're targeting mid-March to have operational budgets in front of council as well.
Good. Questions for Gerry? We didn't have anybody else on that list, right, for the laddering of the taxes?
The phased-in rebate.
Yeah.
There is one new one this year. Well, they triggered it anyway.
Okay.
They can sign, and they have up to five years before they actually trigger it.
Okay.
So one was triggered, I think the last one was triggered this year.
Very good. Excellent.
Okay.
We good? Okay. And Yarmouth Recreation, Frank's here waving at the back. Any questions for Frank? So we'll find out who you hired, like, in the next couple of weeks?
Tuesday.
Okay, good. Awesome. Okay, go ahead, deputy.
I believe I've seen a post on Facebook about a new app, maybe that the Yarmouth Rec is using to get out news kind of about what's going on. Can you speak to that if you could?
Hot off the press. We do have a new app. You text a number, and then you get added to a list, and you'll get updates on things happening. I have joined. It's brand-new. We're just kind of putting the word out right now. But it should be a neat promotional tool to use for all the things that we do year-round. So I'll make sure I share the details with council.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah. Awesome. Any more questions? Good to go. Thank you, Frank. Okay, business. So we're skipping 9A, 9B. Personnel policy. So the recommended motion there is to recommend that council adopt section 1 to 4 of the new personnel policy. Okay, councillor Lesser, seconded by the deputy. Did you want to speak to that?
I think I should, yes.
Then you go right ahead.
Okay, so Lindsay and Jody have done a tremendous amount of work recently. Lindsay's led this project. Our personnel policies are vintage 1992. And they haven't been updated except here and there are small changes. But what we're doing is essentially a rewrite, making the language clearer, we hope, making them easier to understand and interpret, less vagueness. And so we're working our way through all of the policies, but we're not waiting until we're done to bring you sections. We'll bring you sections as we have them completed. And so today, we're bringing you the sections 1 to 4 and hoping for your recommendation to council. And we continue to work on reviewing the sections. And as I say, we'll bring them forward until we're through the process, which is likely to be a few months.
Perfect. So are we okay on this? Any more questions or concerns? Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Signage, and the recommended motion there is to recommend that council refer the installation of signage at the major entrances to the Town of Yarmouth, welcoming visitors to budget. We're not inviting the people to come to the budget meeting, we're.
No, I just wanted to give a little bit of background on that. The Communities of Bloom judges last year, when they toured the Town of Yarmouth, suggested that one of the things we're lacking is welcoming signs to the town, which is what they consider to be something that every community should do. And so at the table at the Communities of Bloom meeting, it was discussed, and the consensus was that the sign similar to the one that's situated at the foot of Stars Road, which has the town logo on it, that it designed similar to that, be erected at the major arteries coming into town. And so we had that discussion with, a very brief discussion with Natalie. She agreed that that was the appropriate type of signage, and that it should be referred to budget because they can be expensive. And we're not suggesting that they do them all at once, but, you know, we should get started on it. So that's the motion.
Okay. Does that give you enough?
I think so.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Did you make the motion?
I made the motion. Yeah, first and second, okay. Any discussion? Although, yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that I think it's, this is an issue that is long overdue. When you come into off the 101 or the 103, there's nothing to say that you're even, I say nothing, but there's very little to say that you're in Yarmouth. And what is there is certainly not very appealing to the eye. So I think it's time that we do do that. And like councillor Dare says, it will probably be a long-term project over, you know, a few years to get these installed because they are expensive, whether it be like what's on the end of Stars Road or something different. Anything is expensive, so. So I think it's a move forward, and we need to do that.
Yeah, I agree. Remember, we used to, or am I wrong? We used to have one just at the end of Lake Milo.
Mm-hmm, an overhead one.
We did, sort of like the one on Forest Street.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, anyone else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, capital budget. Getting good at that walk, Gerry. Come on up. You're getting your steps in, yeah?
Yeah, kind of up.
All right. Give her.
Give her.
Be gentle.
All right. A little background, I guess, on the process first, so everybody is on the same page. Put the request out to managers for what's on their agenda, what's on their list of things they'd like to get done. We call up the wish list because it's all in. We say, don't hold back, everything you want to do, get it in. And we do ask them to prioritize, so they do that. We, I worked with them to put it in the different fiscal years. And once we get the different managers pieces figured out, we put it together in the presentation that you'll see here today in front of you. It often does not work financially, so we go back to the managers, and we kind of negotiate on where priorities within the different departments have to fall. There's things to consider, like intermunicipal agreements, safety and legal requirements that have to be done, so those things all get prioritized. And then it's basically, you know, what's most important. So we let the managers know that there's so much money, and they do, I mean, they're very willing to help and support the process, and basically come up to a final amount, a final number of projects that we can afford to get done in the current year. So when you're looking at the plan, you're actually just looking at and, you know, going to approve eventually, and come to some agreement on the budget for '24, '25. The years will pass that. We try to, we don't, I don't actually even spend a lot of time trying to balance the bottom line there because things do change a fair bit. There are grants that are within the current year that may or may not happen. And so we'll, you know, mid-season, kind of look at what's not going to get done, and if there's money left because projects aren't being done, we might ask to be moved to other projects, that kind of stuff. So we worry about what's in our column, too, which is the budget '24, '25. So just to explain, the first page, we blew it up this way so we can kind of focus on the two years coming. So the balance column is really what's been approved in prior budgets that wasn't or hasn't been completed. Some have been worked on. The big ones, there's two big ones in there with big dollar values. And one is the Vancouver Street, which we know is just pushed out to April, May to start. The other one that has some money building up, and it is our money that we're setting aside to contribute to the Mariner Centre expansion. The other projects, it's just a matter of timing, and sometimes it's, things are ordered, and it just takes months to be delivered, that kind of stuff. And then consultants are having busy as well. So we've left all that money there. Those projects are all still, the intention is to have them done. A few may get done before March, but this was the balance as of the end of December. That's what was left. So in the current year, little difference set up for you. Used our communications support, and it's been a great help trying to get a little better presentation for you and trying to do an overview. So again, we look ahead to the '24, '25 budget, and some of the highlights that we've mentioned, you know, $1 million in community assets, which is big. And it's, you know, it benefits not just the town residents, but the full greater Yarmouth community. Mariner Centre, we've got money set aside for Tractor Field and our, that we've, again, intermunicipal plan, and new investments in the ferry terminal. So again, those aren't just town assets, those are assets that benefit everybody. Looking at the fire department, chief's been patient, but it's the year that we have to let him get some of his new vehicles. Vehicles are old, maintained, but they aren't sufficient for what we need today. So we've got one new truck that we're looking to fund. And the second one is being replaced. So the intention with the second vehicle is that we bought a vehicle about five or six years ago. It still has as much value today as it did when we paid for it. So we're looking, and the chief has a plan in place, to actually sell that vehicle and buy a more appropriate vehicle, combination of couples. So that's the plan in there, and that's why there's actually two vehicles in there. So town's looking to pay for one and a half kind of thing, and the other half will be funded through the sale of an older vehicle. We've also just finished up some of our multi-use trails. We have approved funding for transit, so buses have been ordered, but we'll have to finish paying for those. And there's also, again, some money for paving. So I don't know if you want me to go through the things on our list. But generally, with, in the admin, I call it admin section, but it's kind of like council, admin, and intermunicipal things fall in that section. So we had some money set aside for town renovation of things, so we've reallocated, like, we had windows and that kind of stuff. But so in the balance, we did take the liberty to move a bit of the money that was left over from prior projects and fund some of those things. But new money is really the, with the Mariner Centre, the ferry terminal, pontoons and Tractor Field, so there's some money there. In the fire department, besides the vehicles, there's a bit of money for the SCBA breathing apparatus and also purchasing the small trucks. So we have a truck being used by, I think it's the enforcement, that their lease expires. Fire department has a need for a vehicle like that, so they're going to, the fire department will buy the lease, then we'll get a new, a new, more appropriate, small SUV instead of a truck for enforcement. In the engineering side, that's the big thing really, is spending old money, and that's on Vancouver Street. But there's also money in the current year, or the next year's plan, to finish the trail projects that we had started. So part of that is being encouraged, I'll say, by the province to finish that project up. There is a holdback that is due to the town. But again, it's, these phases were part of our original plan, they weren't completed. And the encouragement is, get those completed, and we'll pay you back your holdback, even though we've used all of the funding from the province. The project itself is not completed. So that's funding there. Within public works, again, there's some street paving, the transit buses, and a new, replace the sidewalk vacuum with a speaker vacuum. So those are new projects. But I know Chad also has some things that are in the works. I think the plow, the salt truck, salt truck was just delivered, but he also has on order the plow truck and also a new sidewalk plow. So those, I think, have been ordered or tendered, so they're in the process, so that money will get spent as well. And then finally, in the wastewater, again, Rob's had some challenges with getting, I guess, engineers and consultants down there. I guess it's specialized work, and they're busy. So he's basically, again, mainly spending some old money, but then a little more allocated towards the 2040 upgrade piece that has to be done. So we'll fund that over time. So, and that's kind of where we ended up. Okay, so, yeah, funding itself, so, as you know, I don't think I have that page here, it's right here, though. So in the current year, we'll look to contribute from operations, $2.2 million, just what we call our depreciation, so something equivalent to depreciation. It's up a little bit from last year because we take, have taken the $100,000 or $150,000, I forget the amount, that was used as debt repayment. So now that we're not repaying the debt, that money is still part of the capital operation. So we've increased that contribution to $2,200,000. We do have some gas tax, which can be used for the paving. Again, not everything qualifies under gas tax. And if you have funding for a project, you can't double-dip with funding, so gas taxes. We typically just use it for paving projects or bigger projects like that. We also have some money for the trails, that's due to come. There's a grant approved for buses, and there's some approved, we've applied for some more money, or some money to put towards the wastewater treatment plan operation or the upgrades. So there's funding there for actually the consulting and that kind of stuff, so that's what the $100,000 is there. So again, you know, bringing, you know, there's $3.5 or almost $3.6 million in the budget. $2.2 of that is town money, of the rest will be funded through other programs. And in the last page, I actually just, we just showed the full five-year plan. And again, not in the very fifth year, there's a few projects in there that'll be five years or further out, but we wanted to let you know that they're on the radar, so they're in there. And again, I'm not too worried at this point trying to balance the funding with the requests because the requests and the funding do change a fair amount from year to year.
Good. Any questions for Gerry?
Hope it makes sense, so we can mull it over, and we'll get to it eventually.
Okay. So looking for a motion to pass the capital budget.
So, your worship, you have a few options. You can, you can recommend it to council. You can defer it to a later meeting, if you want time to take it away, think about it. Or you can simply refer it back and have to do some more work if there are things you know right now that you don't, you weren't going to approve.
Okay, thank you.
Or things you wanted added.
Okay. So there we are. Up to, no, his leg's been on, it's been on, yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah. So that's all right. It's okay. It's this chair. It was on last term, too. Okay, so one of those, one of those three motions, to refer to council, defer or refer back to make some changes, whatever we feel those changes would be. Go ahead, councillor Cleveland.
Your worship, if I may, just in my humble opinion, I'd like to have a little more time to kind of go over it. So if we could possibly defer it to council, I'd be comfortable with that. So I would make that motion if everybody else is okay with it.
So just for clarity, when you say defer it to council, are you asking for it to be on the council agenda?
Council agenda for the next town council meeting.
Okay, so you're not recommending it for approval, you're just deferring it for conversation or discussion at that point?
Yes.
You can do that? I like that answer. Okay, then we won't have, I'm just thinking out loud, then we won't have that two weeks seconds over time after we, you okay with that?
I'm okay with that, but that's.
No, just want to make sure. Yeah, I just want to make sure.
Just to be clear, so to be clear, we'll put it on the agenda with no recommendation. If council comes back and everyone is comfortable, you could propose a motion at that time. But a motion at that time could also be to defer to the next council meeting. You are not compelled.
Gotcha.
To deal with a motion that is recommending it if there is no motion.
To, to deal with a motion that is recommending it if there is no motion from the table here to do so.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that's clear, so we know what, what we have for timelines. Go ahead councillor.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of councillor Cleveland's motion. But I guess my question to Jerry is, is does he have, speaking of a timeline, is there a timeline? And are we, you know, do you need an answer from us quicker, sooner than later, I guess?
Yeah, no, we tried to get this out in front of England January and try to, we tried to get it passed, you know, before, you know, by the March meeting for sure. It just gives the engineers and department heads time to, you know, gear things up. So, you know, we don't want to have this passed in June, they lose a lot of their, their billing season and people get busy. So it's just too early. So yeah, there's, there's time, I guess, to get it passed.
Good. Okay. All right, so you made the motion, did somebody second it? Okay, councillor Dairs, any more discussion, questions, anything? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried, thank you. 9E Hospital Emergency Department and the recommended motion is to recommend that council send a letter to the minister asking for a concrete timeline to support. Did you want to?
Get a second or?
Moved and seconded, go ahead.
Yep, just there was an article that came out from, on CBC that some of our doctors, I believe three of our doctors in the emergency department talked about the deteriorating conditions that they have to work in on top of all the other stress and whatnot. And I think it was 2020 that it was promised that the ball would get rolling on that and here we are. And I just think it would be good to send a letter to the minister to show our support of our medical professionals and hopefully get a concrete timeline, so we know then this project can be finished.
Thank you. Okay, any more discussion, so it's been moved and seconded? Go ahead.
Your worship, I did, I did note the, the concern of council when the, when the article hit the paper. And so I asked our municipal advisor, who's with us today, to, to find me a contact that we could get some information and she did. And so yesterday I had a conversation with somebody within the Department of Health. And from his perspective, the process has been moving along as, as would be expected, that he didn't see that there had been any, any undue delay. But, you know, these things do take time. And so where the project sits right now is that they've asked it to be placed on, on finance treasury for, for consideration. So they don't have a, they don't have a budget yet, they just have a, a number and a plan. So if they get the budget approval, then they'll be able to move forward. By the time the minister would receive the letter from council, that may have occurred and maybe the minister will be able to provide more detail going forward around timeline. So I just want to, I reached out because I felt like there was likely, based on, based on what I saw and was hearing, quite a bit concerned at this table. I don't think a, a letter to the minister is, is that a line at all and may bring more information to the community. And I would suggest, given the importance of, of the issue to the community, it's something we may want to continue to have regular updates on as the project moves forward.
I, I agree. And it'll be the, it'll, it'll be the way that the, the letter is worded. So as, as you said, you know, that positive, you know, what are the timelines and, you know, we certainly support those, those types of things to make sure that, that they know we're, we're supporting it, but we're also, yeah, we, yeah, so it's good. Go ahead councillor.
You just did what I was going to say, thank you.
Okay, anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Southwest African Heritage Month. Just have to find my place again. That is just a letter. Okay, so I, I just received this invitation and Digby Education Committee always does the, hosts yearly, the African Heritage Month Dinner and Dance. It's at the Digby Pines, it has been for the last couple of years. I, I always attend and I don't, did you come with me the last time? We didn't make it, did we? It was, yeah, the weather didn't let us go. So anyway, I just thought I would, I would say, it says, you know, a table consists of seating for eight at a cost of 240, which is really inexpensive. Or 10 for 300. So I'm going. I'm just wondering if anybody else wants to go, then we can have Lindsay purchase tickets, whether it's a table or just two or three people. So if you know now that you want to go, you can let us know. If not, then Lindsay, maybe, when is it, the 17th? Maybe by the end of January, let you know and we can get tickets. Is that fair? So it really doesn't, we don't need a motion. Okay, I just want y'all to be aware of that. It's a really nice event and it's, it's for the whole region. Busker's policy. So the recommended motion there is to recommend that council direct staff to review the relevant bylaws pertaining to busking, busking and review the locations where performers are permitted to have small amplifiers complying with the noise bylaw. Okay, so, okay, moved and seconded. Go ahead councillor Cleveland.
Just for background, the reason that this is there is because it's something that came upon my desk a couple of days ago. Someone was looking, it was something I was not aware of, that someone was looking to do some busking. Actually, I think they were looking to set up some kind of a karaoke or something like that and was told that they weren't allowed to do it because they have a small amplifier and it's against the bylaw to perform even as a busker with a small amplifier. Now, I do understand the logic behind that, at least on Main Street, but I wanted a little bit of clarity and that's, that's what I'm hoping for is a bit of clarity because I was under the impression that it was okay for one thing, but second off, Frost Park is on Main Street and so that would kind of make performances there a problem. And I think so, we should take a look at that, just even that part of it and also take a look at other locations where busking can take place and perhaps even with small amplifiers, but have the rules in place, places like the, the gazebo on, on Beacon Street and Beacon Park and things like that. So that's the reason behind it.
Okay, thank you. Are you good Natalie? Did you want to share anything or you, you okay? Because if you do, by all means, just come out. Anyone else? So do we need to provide a little bit, like how are we feeling about this? Because I understand the question too. And I, I agree, like amplifiers aren't, we know what was happening with amplifiers, okay? That's part of the issue. On Main Street, we've got music playing for everyone that not everybody likes now, but that's okay. So, so how do you do that? And also like the gazebo and, and like you said, the other places, timelines, those types of things. And I know that the public was saying, you know, we, we love this idea, but it's just not, it's really not that simple. Go ahead.
Yeah, in all honesty, that, that is one of the things and it creates its own set of problems, it does. But we need, we do need to open it up, we do need to control it to a degree because, you know, you don't want it to become a bit of a mess. But we do need the ability to come in and perform or for have people come in and perform and have it not be against the bylaws, that's all. And so it just needs to be kind of covered. And ultimately, I'd love to see a, a system in which there were enough demand that we could start scheduling people in and in different spots at different times.
Which you could do if we did, if we could take the music off of Main Street, like even for.
Indeed.
From A to B.
Yeah, and that creates that opportunity for others to perform and, and to busk.
Yeah, okay. So, okay, Natalie's shaking her head, I just want to make sure you have enough to go with. Thank you. Okay. Okay, moved and seconded. Any, anything else on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Make sure you get the CAO on that busking list.
Yeah.
It's got a thing. Oh, and a sunken jungle.
And dance.
And dance, you've got the whole family. Okay, citizen advisory committees. Okay, so the recommended motion there is to recommend that council amend the citizen advisory committee's policy to include provisions for the Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Committee.
So your worship?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, if you want to get a motion on the floor.
Okay, councillor Dairs, councillor Cleveland, go ahead CAO.
Yeah, just similar to our accessibility committee, now that we have staff person and we're going to move forward with initiatives on equity, diversity and inclusion, we are, we're looking over the fence at what other, what other communities have done with, with equity, diversity and inclusion that are ahead of us. And establishing a committee is, is one of the things that, that they do. And so we've provided a, an outline of a mandate and have included in their citizen advisory committee policy because this will include several citizens as well as members of council. So if you have any questions or if you, I hope I can answer them.
I know you can. Okay, we good? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. You're welcome. Main Street parking and the motion there is to recommend that council direct staff to investigate potential safety issues arising from parking on Main Street at the corners of Ellis Street and Chester Street. The motion moved and seconded, okay? Discussion, and I did, I did speak with councillor Bell because she had put this on, I spoke with her earlier and it's just, it's just a matter of referring it to staff and saying, basically there's issues with seeing, but we don't want to inhibit the business, of course, we just want to make sure it's safe for people. So a simple recommendation. Is there any questions or concerns on this? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Okay, telework, work from home policy repeal, to recommend that council repeal the telework work from home policy. Councillor Bell, is that councillor Lesser? Discussion, did you want?
Yeah, I just addressed this quickly. So when we were in the midst of COVID, we, we twice had to vacate the building, shut down the building and had people work from home. And that went swimmingly well. The first time we did it, it took almost a week to get everybody equipped and, and able to get home and, and be able to work from home. The second time we had to do it, it took a day because we had learned from the first time, we had, we had acquired equipment and we knew, we had the tools. This policy then came in and it was a policy to continue, if you recall, we talked about it, keeping the muscle tone. So requiring or enabling staff to on a regular schedule, spend a day working from home. We've talked about this with managers here in Town Hall and we actually believe it's not necessary at this point because we continue, even when we're working here in the office, to use the tools that were necessary when we were working from home. So using Teams meetings or Zoom meetings, and we, we use those on a daily basis. And so we're keeping that muscle tone. The other thing that we've done is we've changed our, our purchasing practices so that when we purchase equipment, that office equipment, computers, we don't purchase desktop computers anymore. It's always laptops, portable devices, so that, so that a person can unplug, take it to where they need to be. So location is, is no longer a, a, a concern. And further, our phone system here in Town Hall, we're in the process of having that replaced with a, with a VoIP system, so Voice Over Internet Protocol. Those phones simply need to be plugged into a, an internet jack, what do you call that? Cable. And, and you have your phone as if you're sitting in your office and you can be anywhere where you have an internet connection. So we're equipping people to be able to do this. They're using the tools, they're keeping the muscle tone. We don't believe it's necessary that people work from home on a regular basis anymore. And so we're, we're recommending repealing this policy. If in the future, we, we determine for other reasons that it's important or desirable to have people working from home, we'll bring forward a policy at that time that suits that requirement. But at this point, for the purpose that this policy was brought forward, we no longer believe it's necessary.
I know what you're gonna ask, I think.
Maybe, I'm just curious. So there's no hybrid working anymore from, from Town Hall? And, and it just, I, we're not like outlawing anything because, for example, we do hybrid meetings, you know, within the council, it just feels like they don't line up necessarily.
Right, so essentially, yes, we are, we're not going to have people working from home. Now, an evening meeting, I might log into a PAC meeting from home. I don't consider that the same thing. I still am attending the office and, and here when I'm scheduled to work. The other thing that we've done since we've implemented this policy is that we've done the compressed work week at Town Hall. And so people are now here four days a week instead of five. And we, because we've broken into two teams, so we have five-day coverage, for instance, Jerry and I see each other three days a week instead of five. You can imagine the relief for me. But, but it, it does then get a little complicated when you say, well, okay, well, you know, Jeff and Jerry are each on a work from home schedule where they're going to be out of the office a day or two a month, then we see each other even less. And part of what we know about, about working here and, and in many workplaces is the interaction with your coworkers, the, the sometimes unintended but, but important conversations are much easily had, more easily had when you're in person than, than trying to schedule a Zoom or Teams meeting, you know, whether you bump into each other on your way into the office, on the way out or at, you know, near, near the coffee pot. So again, our intention with the, with the compressed work week was to, to get better work-life balance. And I, I would say that people would agree 100% in, in this workplace, that that has, that has certainly achieved that, to the point that nobody is asked, nobody's asking, nobody's signed up currently for a work from home schedule, right? People are happy to be in the office with one another, there is nobody that's on a schedule. So it, I think it's had its, it's had its time and at this time and place, we don't, we don't need it. And, but if, if a situation, if the situation changes, circumstances change, I, I, I will bring back a different policy to address that need at that time. But the, the, the purpose of this policy has passed, it served its purpose and recommending repeal.
Thank you.
Good question.
Good answer.
Yeah, and, and I was just thinking of the timing, but if something happened, like the pandemic happened, then you really already have that in place and it's an emergency council meeting, so it's not going to take a lot of time to implement. So, so we're good on that.
Excellent, thank you.
Are we, are we good? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Demolition request, 5 Horton Street, to recommend that council approve the demolition of the dangerous building located at Civic 5 Horton Street, Yarmouth and S, PID 90194697, as the building has deteriorated. Councillor Lesser, seconded by councillor Dairs. Okay, any, any questions on this one?
Your worship, our commission called, Mrs. Care, can you give us your questions?
I was just going to say, how does it, like I've seen it, how does it take so long to get there? Like how does it, do you just find it? Just find it, like it's, it's a mess. Kind of scary. I know there's, I know there's a long process, Paul, I just, those pictures are showing it's pretty, pretty bad.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question again? I couldn't hear everything back.
Nope, that's okay. The, the question is, we've, we've all seen the pictures of, of the residents and just wondering, like it's, it's really bad. How, how does it take so long to get to where we are now?
We discovered the potential deteriorated condition of this building a few months back through a CCL fix complaint.
Gotcha.
And when we investigated it, the side of the building that showed the most deterioration was only visible on the top story due to the fact of the tall underbrush and foliage that was on the backside of the building. We weren't able to fully determine the extent of the damage at that time. We wrote up an order that we got no response with to, to repair the damage. And when we went back to look a second time, the foliage had been fallen off because of the fall season, which allowed us. fallen off because of the fall season, which allowed us a better view of the back wall, and from there, we determined that the extent of the damage of that building was much more severe than what we had originally been made aware of.
Perfect. Good, thank you. Anyone, go ahead, Councilor Lesser?
Just wondering about costs involved with demolition, is that, is that automatically put back on the owner's tax, tax bill, I guess, is that how that works?
That's how it works, and here's what's gonna happen. We're gonna tear that building down if, if council approves this order, and I believe the number that I heard was in the area of $12,000. So, $12,000 would be applied to the, to the property tax bill. In, in most cases, what happens is they then don't pay the taxes, and so a vacant lot sits there until it reaches three years past tax, past, past due taxes, and then it gets on the tax sale list. And we usually put these up for sale for the amount of money owing, so that's taxes and interest, and sometimes we get a bidder, and sometimes we don't, and in the cases where we don't, sometimes the town bids itself, so that we no longer have the receivable, and so that we have the, the serviced lot as an asset, and every now and then, someone comes looking for one. But we, we, when we sell these, we rarely recover what we have invested in them, so this is not a good news story, other than an unsightly and dangerous building will be removed, and we will hopefully someday recover, recover something for that.
Councilor Heather?
Yeah, I just want to comment on the C Click Fix point that was, you know, that this building was, was, been identified because of a report from a, from a fellow citizen, so I think it just shows the value of that C Click Fix, and, and that it allows citizens to have input into what is happening in their town, and that that is, I think, a great way to be able to do that, so, just, I think that just speaks to the value of that.
Thank you. We, yeah, staff can't catch it all, we can't catch it all. Thank you, Paul, very much. Okay, anything else? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, taxi rate increase. Recommended motion is to recommend the council amend the taxi bylaw, too. Number one, increase the taxi rates by a dollar, includes HST, to 6:00 AM to midnight, $10, HST included, and midnight to 6:00 AM, $11, HST included. Number two, remove the fare rate charges for additional passengers. Number three, add a $5 out-of-town charge for package delivery plus the regular fare rate. Number four, increase the fee for waiting instructions of a customer after the first five minutes to $60 per one hour, or a dollar per minute plus the regular fare rate. And for one, add definitions for a fare and a stop to Section 1, definitions of the taxi bylaw, TANIA 32. Okay, have a motion?
Excellent.
Okay, seconded, moved, moved by Councilor Cleveland, seconded by Deputy Mayor. So, who inputs into this?
So, Your Worship, before you get into questions, just, this, this came as a result of a request from, from council to review the taxi, taxi rates, and so Natalie and her department did this work, so the questions, I think, she's standing, yes, please, she can address.
Okay. Okay, so Councilor Heather, you go right ahead.
My question is about point number three, so, the $5 out-of-town charge for a package delivery plus the regular fare rate, so, I guess I'm just questioning the $5 extra, why would that be?
So, today, the charge is $2, plus the regular fare rate. When we met with the taxi operators, one of the largest considerations with their increase in cost is the cost of fuel, and so, that out-of-town could be anywhere out of town, they said they thought it was fair that there would be a surcharge for deliveries out of town, and they recommended the $5.
Okay, I'm gonna, you have a second follow-up?
So, the regular fare rate, is that increasing?
Yes, so this recommendation identifies a fare rate of $1 for the 6:00 AM to midnight, and additionally, an additional $1 for the midnight, so it'd be, in this case, $10 plus $5.
So, that's out of, in town or out of town, it doesn't, it, there's, it doesn't
The regular fare rate doesn't change if it's in town or out of town.
Okay, that makes sense, and thank you.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay, I, I know what the answer is, but I want, I'd like to have you answer it in public, and that is whether or not this was done with consultation with the taxi drivers themselves or taxi companies.
So, yes, we met with all five, and we did it one-on-one, because some were shy to meet as a group, but we had five questions, they answered them, and so this report identifies their, their responses to those questions. So, there was 100% consensus with this report.
Excellent, thank you.
So, I, I just want to understand the, the number one, or, and number three. So, if I drive to Hebron during the day, it's going to be $15?
Only if I, only if I'm doing package delivery, so if I'm driving as a passenger, it's $10, one way. If I want to then return, then that's double the rate, that's $20. So, one way, from point A to the drop-off destination as a passenger, it's $10.
To Hebron?
Yes, so if I'm driving from here-
And then to Carlton?
It's $10, but it's, we only regulate the rates in town, it's up to the taxi drivers what they charge outside, because we don't regulate what happens outside of town.
Okay, that's why-
We're just giving direction within town.
Oh, okay, that's what, yeah.
So, to be clear, if you're a taxi driver, I don't know if the District of Yarmouth has a taxi bylaw.
They, I do not believe it's regulated.
You're not required to have one, so-
Yeah.
If you are a taxi driver and you get a call from Carlton that you want a taxi ride from Carlton into town, you're not subject, well, the rate you charge is not subject to this bylaw.
This is within the town limits. The only thing we're identifying for outside of the town limit is for a package delivery, which could be alcohol, delivery of goods, picked up at the grocery store, whatever.
Okay, thank you.
I, I guess I'm still confused about the $5 for a package. If I'm a, they can deliver a person to Hebron, and it would only be the regular fare rate, but if it's a box, it's an extra $5.
Correct.
That, to me, doesn't make sense, so I'm just asking, I guess, for clarification on, like, how does that work?
Exactly as you've described it, they pay a regular rate plus the charge for a package.
But why would they be requesting that? I guess is my point. Like, I don't understand why you would want $5 to deliver a package, but you don't want it to deliver the person.
I can't answer that question.
Unless, I mean, we're guessing here, but unless, like you said, if, if you drive out to Hebron, you have to drive back. No, that's what I mean. You drive out with a person, it's $10, then you have to drive back, too, so that's 20 for the person, no, when you take the person back, it's another 10. Yeah.
Coming back into town, but if you're taking a package from town to Hebron, it's now $15, and I, I just-
Yeah, today they, Councilor, today they charge $12.
So, it's extra, because you're not a package delivery, so-
So, they're just adding an additional three, they're recommending to add an additional three for out-of-town.
Okay, so, okay, you're on.
I think, I'm guessing, if you're delivering a person, that person gets out of the car, goes into the house or wherever, but if you're delivering a package, it involves a little bit more work for the taxi driver, I'm assuming, because they have to get out of the car, knock on the door, wait for somebody, that's why I'm guessing they probably want the extra money, but I don't, I'm kinda with you, I don't really understand it, but I'm thinking it's just the extra work that's involved.
Yeah, the handling part, shipping and handling. Go ahead, Councilor.
It occurs to me that, that it is possibility that this is to discourage that very thing. The taxi drivers, quite honestly, would prefer not to, and the rare delivery services other than taxis, so.
Okay, any more questions or concerns with this one? Okay, well, are we ready to vote on it? We good? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you, Natalie. Okay, March Committee of the Whole Date Change. Don't know what that is.
Yeah, sorry.
Wait a minute, I'm just trying to think if it's, no, it's not on here.
So, we're, we're asking you to consider changing the Committee of the Whole Date in March, and the reason we're asking for that is that it occurs, let me just get my calendar moved up here. So, it would occur the afternoon before Good Friday, and for those of us who are on a compressed work week, and that's all of us working in the office, if we have Friday off, and it's a holiday, then we get Thursday off, and so, to be quite honest, Lindsay and I would be coming in that day just for Committee of the Whole. So, if it's possible to change it, we appreciate it, if it's not possible, we will be here.
Do we want to mess with them, or do we want to do?
Depends what the change is.
Yep. So, what are you looking, January, February, March, what are you looking, Jeff? Like, one, two, three, four, it was the 28th, so.
Right, so if the 27th was possible-
I can't do the 27th.
Or 26th.
Can't do the 26th.
Or the 25th.
Can we do the 21st? Could we move it up a week to the 21st?
You could, you could.
I know, we can do whatever we want.
That's what you can do.
Okay, you're gone for a couple weeks?
Actually, one week.
Yeah, okay.
So, I think it might be for me, too, because I think I may be in town, but, no, never mind. Trying to get my schedule so it makes sense. 21st would work for me.
Does anybody not work on the 21st? Does it not work for anyone on the 21st? Steve might be in Toronto.
Hard to say where you'll be, eh?
He's planning that Yugoslavia trip just that day.
I can't even. Ah, where are you, Derek? Are you good? 21st? Heather? Gil, you said you might be virtual? And you're, you're okay with that? But you're all right with that? Okay, okay, I just want to make sure everybody's good. All right, so let's go to the 21st. Woo! Let's make the CAO happy. I'm just teasing.
Thank you.
I'll be, I'll be good for the rest of the meeting.
He's so unhappy, most of the time.
I know, right? So, I'm happy. He was happier when he said, "Mayor, how about that compressed work week? I'll work on Fridays and you work on Mondays." Well, he has to put up with me for three days a week, and that's too much. Okay, so the 21st of April, can I have a motion for that? Okay, March, I mean. Thank you, deputy, and don't be laughing at me, Councilor, because I'll forget your light. Seconded, seconded by the guy that's laughing at the mayor. Okay, any further, anything further? All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Thanks, folks. Listen, we're just happy to make you happy. I'm going to get it at the next meeting, okay. Mariners Center Expansion, so, to recommend that council amend the Mariners Center Development Agreement to update the roles and responsibilities of the project representatives. Can I have a motion? Okay, thank you, seconded by the deputy, go ahead, Council Dairs.
I guess the short, Reader's Digest version of that is that it would enable Mark Brophy to become the project manager solely and not serve on the EPC, because that's where his time is required.
So, does that take him off of the EPC?
He would, and we'd be looking for replacements on the EPC. There's already one vacancy, so this would create a second vacancy, and we hope to have a meeting in the, in the next week or so to, to fill those positions, but in the meantime, it'll enable Mark to concentrate on where he needs to be, which is project management.
Okay, good. So, you're gonna fill, because one's been vacant.
There'll be two vacancies, there's already one vacancy existing when Mr. Fuller stepped off, and so there's, there are two nominations currently that, that are being considered, so hopefully the Mariners Center Expansion Board will get together reconvene in the next week or so, and we'll move forward with filling those positions.
I only ask because I thought there was a timeline on how long it takes to fill it. I know it's hard to find-
We're already in violation of the policy, if the short answer is-
But you can't, yeah, yeah, okay. All right, so, moved and seconded. Any more discussion on this one? Anyone have any questions? Gil can probably answer them.
Just, just, Your Worship, this is a little bit time-sensitive, because they want to get on with it, so if it's, if it's okay with council, if it's, doesn't offend anybody, if we could have a special council meeting immediately following to ratify that decision, then it will allow the MCEB to move forward.
I suppose, but, I don't know. It's a lot of favors for me.
Don't worry, I've got it written down. I think we just asked for a few million dollars to mess around with, so we'll give them this. Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, so correspondence. And this one, I just need, I don't know how to address this, because I don't know if it might be grants, but I just received, I received the letter attached from the Mariners, one of the owners of the Mariners, that they're planning the evening on February 23rd at the Grant Hotel, it is, it's a fundraiser, it's a meal, silent auction, and all those things. The tables are $1,000 for eight people, yeah, so they're just, they were looking for our support in this one, and I'll be honest, CAO, I just didn't know how, like, is it a grant, is it a, like, how do you handle, how do you handle this one? Whoops, that was one of the tough questions. Look at Jerry.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot like a grant, and it's a fundraiser, and they're looking for your support to, to make it successful. I guess I would, I would offer this, and I'm looking at Jerry when I say this, in case I get it wrong, but we had planned this year to renew, the town's had season tickets for the Mariners as a, as a support from the beginning when that team relocated to Yarmouth. This year, we didn't do that. There was a, an administrative error that occurred, not in this building, that caused that not to happen, so I would assume if council wanted to spend that money on this initiative, that money is there, question mark? He's nodding his head. So, if you wanted to support this fundraiser, that's how we would deal with it.
Okay, hang on. So, it's, it's this or the season tickets?
Well, the season ticket ship has sailed, so.
Oh, we missed it for this year.
Right.
Okay, what do you think, folks? I mean, we, we do it anyway, go ahead.
Well, no secret, I'm a supporter of the Mariners hockey team, so I, I like the idea that the, the money that would have been contributed through the ticket purchase can be used for this, but follow that up with the fact that if you're purchasing a table for eight people, that you make those tickets available, staff as well.
Yep. Okay, okay, so, are you making that motion? Okay, to, to support that, and you seconded it? Okay, any more discussion, questions? Deputy?
Just more of a comment, I know they're a nonprofit now, and as someone who, you know, works for Jay Strong, and I see the various things that they donate- see the various things that they donate to us and many other things in our community, I think this is money well-used, and actually, it ends up coming back at the end of the day anyhow, so happy to support this one.
Yep. Councillor Heather?
I'm just looking for clarification on the motion. They're asking if they, we, they could count on us to purchase a table or two, so I just want to make sure that we're voting on one. Is that, that the intent? Okay.
Yeah, thank you for that. Yeah, so the motion is on one table at $1,000, eight people. Okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, and Yarmouth Environmental Think Tank. I see Leslie was here. Is he still? No? Okay. Okay, so did we, did we read that? We've, well, we've obviously read this one, and the question here was, I mean, we do most of this stuff.
Yeah, I think, Your Worship, the question or the thrust of this is, is, you know, are we paying attention to climate change and, and climate change impacts? And we absolutely are, and we have as part of our, our municipal planning strategy, a climate change adaptation plan, and that is presently, the MPS is presently, as we talked about earlier, we're beginning the review process, and so, you know, it is on our radar. We've taken several green energy initiatives to try and, say, reduce our carbon footprint. We've looked into electric buses. We're not there yet in terms of there being on the market buses that, that are of the size that, that would serve our community, but we hope that our next generation of buses will be, will be electric. So, you know, we are mindful, it's part of what we're responsible to do, but it doesn't hurt at all to have citizens reminding us of those responsibilities and keeping us, we'll say, accountable to, to, to do the right thing.
Okay, so do we just want to leave it? Do we want to send a letter with what you just said? What do you want to do, folks? I don't mind calling her either. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we at least respond and, you know, at least give the explanation at the CAO, give, you know, just said, and I think it's important, and I always like when community groups kind of step up and let us know about things that may not be on our radar, in a radar, in a very positive way, so we could respond to that.
Okay, is that your motion?
Yeah.
That we respond with the CAO's information? Seconded by Councillor Lesser? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Thank you. There's no additions. In camera. Do we have any in camera? Because we actually have. Oh, we'll do that, yeah? I just got to see if there's.
How are we doing time-wise?
We're doing great.
Yeah, okay, I've got one quick question for you that I think is an in-camera item, but we should do a special council, and we can tag that on, on that agenda.
Motion to adjourn, please. Okay, deputy, Councillor Heather, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Okay. Okay, so we're going to do a special council meeting, okay? So, I'll call this, I'll call this special council meeting to order. We're on the unseated lands of the MIGMA attendance. Can I have a motion to? Okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Councillor Lesser and Councillor Heather. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that was to excuse Councillor Bell. Just so, you know, we're reading each other's minds, but it doesn't work. Jerry, thank you.
Thanks. Do you have a council meeting?
We have.
I said the next council meeting, didn't I? True story.
Good thing you're standing, and the door keep moving. Poor Jerry. Okay, record of attendance, absent or declared, issues of conflict of interest. Okay, there's one agenda item, and it is the Mariners Center Expansion to recommend that council amend the Mariners Center Development Agreement to update the roles and responsibilities of the project representatives. Moved by Councillor Heather, seconded by Councillor Gil. Any discussion?
Question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you. Oh, motion to go in ca, motion to go in camera. Thank you, Councillor.